Hello.
Hey folks.
Hi Stacy.
Hey Prince.
I'm good, how are you?
I'm doing well, thanks.
Stacy, did you get to go to QCon?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Did you get to go to QCon?
Oh yeah, I got to go to QCon. Have you, uh, you haven't heard the news, huh? We, Adolfo, Porco, I don't know if you know, you know Porco or not. He and I had the day one kickoff keynote. And, um, yeah, it went smashingly well, man.
Yeah, I thought I saw. Uh, you and Porco.
Yeah, you, uh, you should find the video or I could post it actually, let me, let me see if I can find it real quick and I'll, I'll post it here. Yeah, Porco, Porco was my, um, I was a DevOps engineer in trouble. And Porco was my, uh, open source maintainer, luchador hero that came to my rescue, Yessenia. And it was quite entertaining, we had a lot of fun, we were both very nervous. Uh, which is funny because Porco has given so many talks. Um, but you know, we're all human, we all still get nervous, right?
I still get nervous.
I know, it's like, that's just one thing you're never gonna get over is like that little bit of stage fright you feel.
Like, what if I forget my line? It's like, I have no line.
Well, that's the thing is like, once you get out on there, on that stage, like, I didn't see the crowd. Or like, it, it just like, it couldn't register because at some point it just has to become a blur, right? And a blob. Um, but like, I totally got nervous in my first lines, I'd, I had my first lines memorized to a T, totally flubbed them. But, you know, it happens, it was fine. Uh, we did, we did alright and, um, yeah, we got really great reception from everyone that we spoke to, we just kept getting approached by literally everyone at the conference and it was really, really well received, so I can't, I can't say anything better about it than that. So, I, I can't ever give another talk or keynote now though, because we've set the bar so high.
I mean, that just means we need to replicate what you've created in some sense.
Yeah, I think, I think our group here, by the way, our stickers are amazing, you guys. Um, I'm gonna have to try and figure out a way to get, uh, Prince to get you some stickers and stuff because our little, I'm gonna see, I'm gonna see if I can, let me see if I can like, find one real quick. Our bear stickers are awesome!
They're gonna be nice.
Prince a pack.
Sorry, yes, he, I didn't get you.
I was saying Stacy's gonna have to ship you a pack, the share of there.
So I have it in my badge still, but you can see a really cute little picture. It's so cute. Definitely one of the best stickers that we have in our, in our pack here.
Hi Stacy, hi Prince, hi.
Hey, Jero, how are you?
Hope you're good.
Um, we're waiting on Marcela, she's gonna be a few minutes late. We're just doing some chat in between, sharing the link to the notes, I'm not on camera. Spam is calling me. Let's go ahead and mark your attendance. Uh, okay, we have opens, uh, top of mind for me is, uh, Jiro, were you working with Sal on the blog post?
Oh yeah, we were, we, I think the, we've posted the first two parts, remaining the third part, and that's, that's on me. I have not done the edits, that's where I left for the third part, that's the only reason why it has not been posted. But I'll try to get that over with and maybe it will come on.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I was, I was looking at it for the other day on our updates. Uh, do you wanna set yourself a deadline to get that done?
I think I would do that before, uh, the next Tuesday, but we are not going to have a call next Tuesday, so I'll drop it on the channel. I'll drop it on the channel, maybe get a review and we'll finalize when it's going to be posted, maybe the next week we are going to have a call.
Okay, so we'll finalize it December 2nd.
Yeah, sure.
I realize that next week, uh, go ahead and post it, but next week, um, most of the US is gonna be in Thanksgiving holiday. So even though Thanksgiving holiday is Thursday, Friday, a lot of, a lot of individuals like to take the week off, so next week might be a little bit quiet, just a heads up.
Okay, I think I could try to get it done before the weekend or by Monday, if I put this in the channel on Monday, will I get a response?
You can tag me.
And a few people might still be available like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it just depends. As we get closer to Thursday, like Thursday, Friday, uh, most of us are not working on Thursday, Friday. But Wednesday, I'm not working at all next week, just so you know. Especially after last week at QCon and doing the whole thing, right? I was like, wow, that, giving a talk really, I, it causes profound anxiety on the level that I, uh, have not experienced before. That was my first QCon talk ever, uh, the kickoff keynote, yeah. Pretty wild. Um, but yeah, I think some people will still be around, Jero, so if you wanna, um, if you wanna post on Monday, I think, I think we'll have a couple of folks that are able to respond.
Okay, I'll try to make it post before, on or before Monday.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah, and most people, they might be ignoring their work, work, but this is like passion works, that they might, you might get more response, but definitely, um, okay, so by Monday and then we'll have it at least by the December 2nd of their call. And this is the beginners. Um, I'm gonna wait for Marcela. For this 2026 roadmap. Most top of mind for me, and then we have the open source Africa proposal. Uh, that was something that came out of the office hours. Uh, Stacy, for us to start a new initiative under OpenSSF. Like if we wanna do an OpenSSF working group focused on the open source and security Africa. Do you know the best way to approach that would be?
Uh, I mean, I, I put, sorry, sorry, please go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead Prince, yeah.
So I, I put this there because, um, Marcela mentioned that it'd be something that we discussed, but I mean, how this goes is entirely down to the group.
Yeah, I had checked with Kate on like, uh, sanctions and things like that for like internally and the advice that I got here was, start your group, have at it, it's not, doesn't need to be anything officially sanctioned by Linux Foundation, that was like the previous meeting that we had spoke about this where I was gonna try and check if we needed to do something official. Um, but you guys are saying that you want this to be an official OpenSSF like working group dedicated to, uh, open source security in Africa specifically, is that correct?
Yes, so, um, so at least we get some guidance from the OpenSSF.
Understood.
Structure, a few things that's also, so, okay. Think, uh, I send to yourself and yes, he invites to the councils, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to help, uh, in whatever way I can. Uh, and I think this is a, a really good initiative. I'm not sure if like, maybe we start as a SIG of the Bear Working Group and then see where that leads us or yeah, so let's, let's do some, some checking on the process and see, um, i- is it, uh, in specifically and going to be like headquartered out of a specific location that you guys all are, Prince? Or is it sort of, you look, I mean, I, I get that it's OSS Africa, but like, are you targeting specific, uh, cities or regions or anything like that?
Yeah, so the goal is to get, um, every country in Africa. As, as chapters in every country, so country chapters. We do not have, uh, a physical space dedicated to anyone, to us, yes, I mean.
Okay.
But for now, we can see myself, Seth and Aaron are actively working on this, and so, yeah.
Cool. Hey Marcela.
Hi, sorry for being very late.
No worries.
Okay, so Stacy, you have the action to figure out, I guess, next steps in.
We lost Yessenia mid-sentence.
Oh, are we talking about the SIG though? Um, cause I can also definitely help with that.
Yeah, we were just talking about OSS Africa proposal in general, so yeah, um, is that what you're, like, is it, would it, would it start as a SIG, I guess, is the question, Marcela?
I think so, I think that makes sense, um, I think the way we define SIGs or special interest groups, um, at least from the, um, sort of broader openness of perspective is like a very specialized effort. Um, that is also well scoped. Um, I think both of those basic criteria apply here. Um, the nice thing about SIGs too is that they don't need to be, their governance structure is, um, that they have a lot less requirements to actually get started. There's not necessarily a tech review that needs to happen, it can happen at the working group level and so, um, what I've seen done at other working groups or new SIGs is that uh, the whole working group just has a vote. Um, they, like, we hold a vote, we can do that on Slack, we can do it live here. Um, if we had a mailing list, we can do it that way. Um, but either way, we could just have like a short vote, um, I think simple majority is probably fine. Um, and then if most people say yes, then the, the SIG just kind of starts. Um, and then I think the only thing the SIG leads are then responsible for having some community meetings, which I think you're already doing, right? So, um, I think, yeah, um, I'm really not concerned there.
Sounds good, so do we want to, do, does it need to be an official like, uh, um, proposal under like, uh, specific GitHub issue or anything like that? Or is it just, just on our Slack channel, we can say we're proposing to have this special interest group, OSS Africa? And then we kind of vote yes or no?
A good question, actually, um, I've seen some people open could have issues in other working groups, so we can kind of do it that way and be very open about it. Um, and then the vote can happen on that issue itself as well. Um, I think we could do like a good vote or we could do just thumbs up, thumbs down. Which is also what it does, but, yeah, um, we, we can probably do it that way and then just post on Slack that people should vote.
Great.
Is there any additional like PRs that need to be put into the tech report for this?
We can to make it like very official at the tech level, but I think technically it's enough to do it at the working group level. Um, I'm trying to find like the template that we could still follow if we want to like save it at the working group level.
Yeah, I'm looking as well.
So, I guess it's
Sorry, um, I think I, I lost track of what was being discussed at one point, and could you please? Help me, I didn't get what you were looking for.
Uh, so you're asking what we're, what we're suggesting that the next step is, is that right Prince?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so, uh, I think under, to make it official, I think the idea is to submit a proposal and potential vote to create this new SIG under the Bear Working Group. Um, so it's a special interest group is the SIG, the SIG, uh, name. And so it'll be SIG OSS Africa for now, um, to start the motion and so that you guys can start, um, having this, uh, this group and the meetings. Alright, cool, and then Marcela posted, uh, uh, in the chat, uh, which I can copy over into the notes as well, um.
Yeah, I already copied it over.
Oh, cool. You're awesome, thank you. Um, so yeah, we'll use this as a template to submit a GitHub issue to formally request. And I think is, do we have our own repo, right? So we could just do it in the Bear Working Group repo.
Me too, I think it's OSSF slash WG-Bear or BearWG, I always forget which way it goes, but yeah.
I think it's, it's, it's backwards from what we wanted, so it's WG dash bear.
Okay.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah.
Cool, and Prince, would you like some help, uh, creating the issue and, and all of that? Would you like, I can maybe help, uh, submit with you, we could co-author it together if you'd like? To create the special interest group?
Yes.
That work?
I'd be glad, yeah, that would be fine.
Okay. Awesome.
And I think it's probably just enough to take that template I shared and have that be the issue, right?
Um, yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Seth, what, what, do you, do you have something to say about this? Okay. Oh no, I think I'm, I'm good.
Yeah, and then once you submit the PR, then we can vote in the PR. Um, the approval and then we can do that, if you can have it by, by the December 2nd call, we can also vote during then.
I think that's doable. So I will take the action item, uh, for Prince and I to get this submitted together, how's that?
Yeah, really glad that you're, you are helping us with this, so. The only help is welcome.
Happy to help.
Alright, so the next item on our agenda is the 2026 roadmap. Um, what we want to accomplish and do, um, let me pull up the notes from the tax updates because that had notes. There's a working group called the Buss. It's on the tack like list, it confuses me, cause it's literally right next to the bear one. Um, okay, so for 2026, I shared the tack report that we did, I had it up here. I think we said, speaking of games. Um, and a part of this is for the OSS Africa group as well as um, open source. Multi-global. This is, I love. Et cetera. That's over month. Jay had volunteer to take this over. And then office hours slash, we wanted to do the welcome calls. So, for me, starting with the office hours welcome calls, uh, thoughts on how do we strategize? That, I think in top of mind, we do a welcome call, we alternate welcome call to office hours.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good way to start, especially because I think Devrel is they, I don't think they've sort of regained momentum, um, right? I think Stacy's confirming that, so.
Well, yeah, I think we're hoping to, but yeah, it's, it's a, it's a shift still that needs to happen officially to move out of the Marketing Advisory Council into or under the tech, I don't think we've officially submitted for that to happen yet, so.
Got it. Yeah, and the way that we were talking with the devil, or, I was talking with someone from the devil group. Um, the way that we sort of position the two working groups is that we sort of focus on the earlier part of the sort of career pipeline. And Devrel focuses a bit more on sort of like, okay, you are a developer, like established in the community, how do you stay? How do you, um, find new projects to work on if something happens and all of that? Which I think is relevant to, to our group as well, but, um, I think that was kind of how we had thought about positioning those. Those two groups. But yeah, in the meantime, I'm, I'm fine with just alternating office hours or just, I, I almost wonder if some of the office hours topics that we've been doing could actually shift towards OpenSSF tech talks instead? Or something like that? I don't know what the, um, options are there.
Or maybe even just having a a separate kind of channel. I know tech talks are like a marketing sponsor kind of webinary kind of thing, so I don't know if they, I don't know if they'll let us have their tech talk.
Yeah.
Yeah, but ma- maybe we come up with something similar, but that just has a slight name change, right? Um, and still get it posted and, uh, on the channel and stuff like that.
I was thinking like Bear Talks or something like that. Yeah.
I would say the, the Bugs, but with a H, B-H-U-G-S is like hugs. I don't know how like HashiCar had those hashy, uh, user group meetings, they called them hugs, I was like, man, that's the best name ever. But ours would be Bear Hugs.
Bear hug talks? And then these would be what, like more project focused?
I think more like the original office hours. So that we just
What were the original office hours, you filled me in a little bit?
Oh, just like the ones we've been doing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because I think if we take that time slot for the welcome calls, then.
So pick a topic, let's gather people from the community, kinda like a little bit of education, a little bit of community stuff and, okay. Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's community and then what will be our welcome calls?
That should be more project focused, right? Like we could almost even take, um, Jiro's blog posts and just kind of it, turn them into slides or something like a little more interactive. And then I think different community members, it'd be nice if different community members like kind of rotated through like presenting that.
Would we pick like, a project or a working group to focus on for all of those welcome calls? Or would we kind of do brief intros every call? For everything, I don't know what you, what you were thinking about there.
I'm not sure. Um, I think some of it we'll just kind of have to figure out as we go, but I think doing a little bit of intro and then maybe like a highlight could work.
Cool.
Then even if people didn't, like attended a previous one and didn't get to hear about a project that, or like more in-depth about a project that they care about, they can sort of come back. And maybe we can like time it where we're like, it's exactly like, not exactly, it's hard to do, but like around this time, every like 15 after or something, we start the project highlight.
What comes to mind is like, uh, the boots that we had in open, um, for OpenSSF, those demos. We can probably do like, two projects per call or something.
I like that idea. And I think yeah, I, I think the projects are willing to, to come on and talk about themselves and give demos as well. I think that would be an easy, easy win.
Yeah. Uh, so it'd be like, uh, demo, maybe what is next and then where you need support?
Yeah, and I should also say like, maybe we shouldn't even limit it to just projects, like from a TAP perspective, but also like SIGs and working groups.
Yeah.
You can kind of see how we balance that, but I, we have a lot of like really interesting SIGs across the OpenSSF and so I think it'd be nice to highlight them too.
Yeah. Okay. And then I guess, looking at the schedule, um, which is in both chat and the notes. I made a 2026 slide. Or tab, do we wanna start thinking of topics? Um, so maybe we can get January, February, March kind of picked out, um, and then we can get the people to find the time.
Yeah, so I just added a column. Yeah, so I just added a column um, for the. Highlight um, for the technical initiative highlight. Let's see. We can just start going through the list alphabetically or something. Or like start from graduated incubation sandbox or the other way around. Just trying to.
Yeah, um. Maybe we can do least active. Like the Sig or working group that needs the most support. I don't know how we define that.
I don't know if we can get that information.
Yeah, I say we just start reaching out. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was about to say, you could just check the. How they are channels. Uh, what are the contributions to the chat in their channels? Perhaps engage. Whether they are table or not, that is one way we can.
Um, that's a good idea. And if we're gonna do two per call, so each initial gets like thirty minutes essentially. Um, we could probably go through them fairly quickly where we can do one that's like. Needs more contribution versus one that gets a lot and then we can kind of like off balance it. I would volunteer Bear be one of the first. Groups. And then we find somebody else. I'm thinking C R A or A I M L, but we don't forget somebody to volunteer.
I'm sure we can talk to Miha about. Volunteering for A I N M L.
And I'm just, I know those are like the hot topics.
Yeah.
C R A and um.
Do you mean the um, the policy working group or like their actual C R A? Sig, actually, I'm not sure now if they have that.
Why don't we give them a whole hour? Because I know there's like three to four different calls that they do. There's like awareness, the policy, and then the high level umbrella.
Okay, I think that'd be good. You can honestly also give A I N M L a whole hour. Um, because they just had a bunch of SIGs um, that. Are standing up.
Okay, then we can move ours, just give them. A whole hour. Thought put us for me.
Yeah, like I would still probably do the intro to like all of the working groups at the beginning. Or something, do like a quick landscape.
Like in January?
Oh, no, I, well, we can do it in January or we can do it and I guess they're recorded, right? So maybe we don't even need to do it every single time. Um, I was just kind of thinking like if someone has not seen the whole like working group landscape before, then.
Yeah.
Like it never needs to take up much time, but I was kind of thinking it could be good to like recap and especially working groups do come and go.
We could start off with January with that. Where it's just like, these are all the different working groups.
Yeah.
And if we do it in good snippets, I think that's something marketing could reuse.
Yeah. Yeah, that and maybe even talk about the like structure of how like projects are organized and that kind of thing. Because I think a lot of people. Even people that have been in the openness of a long time get confused. I like that approach though Prince of like just going through some of the Slack channels and kind of seeing how active or inactive they are.
Um, yeah.
So we should start tracking these.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we wanna like track in this uh, spreadsheet somewhere like the list of working groups? The list of uh, SIGs and who we've reached out to and who the point of contact is? Should we just do it below this calendar?
Maybe. I was gonna make a new tab, just call it T I.
Okay, cool.
Second initiatives and that, that would just encompass everything.
Great.
Contact, what else did she say?
I think who's reaching out and then. I guess if help is needed and if they, if we can get them scheduled, like what month or they'd like to come on. It's probably not a bad idea. No, that way we can track all of this.
Yeah, I think next year could just literally be helping grow the, the community groups. That way we don't have to think of different topics. And then if we don't have it, then we can just come up with a topic and have a panel or something.
It's even thinking that like, right now it seems like the. Office hours and the welcome calls are like merging, which I kind of like actually.
Yeah, I figure we should reuse the same time. Yeah. Alright, so it looks like. Stacy and Marcella are working on the. The sheets.
It's the working group for the C R A. I think that's just the global cyber policy, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's just that. The series, the like main piece of policy that they focus on.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, their, their mascot is the crayfish, so. They kind of are the C R A working group.
Yeah.
But yeah, it would be kind of interesting to hear them talk about um, maybe some of the like recent A I. Policies that are coming out and. Guess I've moved on to. Asking about questions, but.
Yeah, I think we should have a format and um, maybe a slide deck that we. Put together for this.
Yeah. Do we still have the deck from? The booth that was used?
We do, we can, we can edit that.
And then what about baseline?
It's a special interest group under, uh, it's a Sig under orbit, that we're working group.
Okay.
So whatever, I can't, I can never remember the full acronym for orbit. Opera, I can't remember, it's something about interoperability and.
That's fine.
But that's where the, that's where the baseline lies. Maybe, maybe that might be something we add here is like what projects live within these working groups, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the. Well, yeah, the tech has at least like a working group and project level map. Um, but I think the SIGs aren't all. There.
Right.
Yeah, and the thing was just like we wanted to reduce like a little bit of overhead for the tack and just like not have to. Review like every time a Sig is spun up or spun down because it happens pretty frequently, so. See if I can find this map. Yeah. Um, this even includes. Yes, yeah, Princess.
Yeah, I think that's right. And then Devra, does that fall under any of these working groups?
Uh, it'll be its own, I think, working group. Under the tack eventually. That's the plan anyway.
Let me put uh, Mike Scavetta as the contact for Alpha Omega, I think so, right?
Uh, it would be Michael Winsler.
Okay.
He's Winsler's tech and see the face of Omega.
I see, yeah, I thought Scavetta was part of it before, but maybe he like moved on.
Uh, he is, he's one of the stakeholders, so Bob, Henry and Michael, they're all stakeholders from their associated companies.
I see, okay.
But once there's the one that goes down, he's like, I'm from Alpha Omega. Forgot we're recording now. Yeah, so for everybody else on the car, I know it's late on your time, so we're just. Populating the office hours spreadsheet on the techno initiatives, but. I think we'll probably use the rest of the time for that, so if you wanna pop off, um, more than welcome to. I know it's late on your end.
If you have any other suggestions for the twenty twenty six roadmap, definitely um. Mention, yeah, add it into the notes, um, raise it here as questions.
I, I just wanted to ask, oh, sorry, please go ahead.
No, no, please go ahead.
Okay, um, so I wanted to ask how, how are the mentorships going and? Have their mentorship scheduled for? Like the coming year, is there any discussion? Has there been any discussion on that?
Uh, I was going to say the exact same thing actually, so. Um, yeah, we need to get the mentorships on the roadmap as well, I think.
Yeah.
Um, and I think. There is a budget for that already. I may need to uh, double check with Adrian, um, but I believe um. After we requested funding for mentorships last summer, this is now just going to be part of Open S S F's budget every year. Um, but anyway, we should start planning um, the projects, we should start engaging the projects that want to host mentees. Um, and kind of um, yeah, launch the second iteration. There, I think there were several lessons that we learned from last year.
We should review those lessons, maybe get a call with um, Cairo and others.
Good call out, Prince.
Yeah, I also wanted to mention the UN uh, uh, office hours. Uh, last office house, Sal mentioned, or proposed. Uh, a conference for the O S S Africa. Coming September twenty seven. Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to mention that.
Good call out, thank you.
Yeah, that probably means the C F P is going to open relatively soon, actually.
What was that specifically for? Sorry, I missed that.
I think it was. Um, I. Prince, what conference were you talking about?
We, we were just um. I mean, as part of our roadmap and the goals we had, we were discussing for the coming year. We thought of as an organization that is the O S S Africa as a group hosting a conference. As, so that'd be a milestone for us. Not necessarily that, we will be able to do it or not, but I was just calling that out here.
Okay. I don't know, maybe you have better insight into this Stacy, how long it takes to organize. A conference or like a colo or something.
Uh, so it depends on where you wanna do it, but I would say as much time as you can possibly get. So if you're thinking of doing it in the fall of next year, that's probably good time. Um, because anything sooner is, it's, it's too much, too fast. Uh, so if you start, if you. Uh, so if you start, if you want to host a a conference next year. I I wouldn't do it any earlier than the fall. Um, but I would say building community would be, I would say, an initial first goal for for you guys. And making sure that that you can really get a lot of people and interest uh in in into uh. The community first and maybe. Seeing if those people can attend conferences that you like. And that you'd want to be part of and maybe submitting talks to those conferences. Um, is maybe a a better way to get started. Post, I mean, I'm not gonna stop you from organizing a conference, but. It is a lot of work. I will forewarn you right now, it is more than. More than you can probably handle by yourself. Um, I'm lucky enough to work with the Linux Foundation and have them do the events side of things. Um, but if you wanna like participate in like a, like have a colo event at like CubeCon or something like that, or. Open Source Summit or what, any Linux Foundation event, usually there's a mechanism on those websites to submit. Um, a colo event, right? So if you feel like, oh, I want to do something new specifically for this at one of those conferences, you can submit a proposal to them. And then they can either accept it or reject it and they'll help you plan it, which is what I would recommend. If 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 you do want to try that, but you could also start with like meetups and things like that, right? And and host local, local community gatherings. Um, and get a feel for it that way and sort of build the community that way first.
Well, thank you. I was just like I said, I was just waiting.
Oh, yeah, I think it's a great goal. It's just, do you want to work that hard, right? Um, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I do also want to emphasize, I think it's going to be very like valuable for. The O S S Africa's group and also I think just Open S S F at large to also establish a connect like. Connections to um things like Africa Cyber Fest and and those, right? Um. So hopefully we can try to do both essentially as, but I really like the suggestion of the co-located. Events, um, I know, um. It's too late for FOSDEM this year, but I think FOSDEM will also have like. Uh, call for developer rooms or something like that, and so um maybe for next year. Twenty twenty seven, so maybe for the twenty 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 seven FOSDEM. Um, applying for a um O S S Africa developer room, I think would be really good.
DEFCON does as well, even though that was a huge uh conference in Vegas. And then I know Grace Hopper has. It's a little bit different, but they have their open source days. That could be an opportunity.
Yeah, and I would say Prince, if if there's. Like start, start the list, right, of of what conferences? Y'all think are are of interest, uh, anything and everything that comes your way and kind of rank them by. What you, where you'd like to be, um. And prioritize that way, see if, and then see if they do have. A colo option, if they don't, maybe reach out to the events team who's running it, um. Things like this, right? Like this is all stuff that you can start, but I would say, you know, just start, start by submitting talks. Maybe people don't know about Open S S F, we could, you know, we can get you trained up. And if you want to give a talk about Open S S F, a all of us here can help, you know, develop that kind of thing um for you all as well.
Yeah, I think the slides that we can do January, that could just be something that's reused. For these kind of talks. Uh, yeah, so it might be an opportunity.
Who we are, what we do, what our working groups are, what our projects are, what kind of each of them do and how you can actually get involved, right? I think that's, that's gonna try and help you build community there.
Yep. And then I. You're good. Uh, for Prince, I signed you the task for the. Uh, O S S Africa group. Uh, I put it in the notes as well, but I added a chat with Stacy just uh said how to organize the speaking engagements.
I just copied it to my personal chats, so they'll be working on that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, we have four minutes left. I do have to. Use the restroom before my next call, but um. Any last minute roadmap items that we may have missed?
Um, did the mentorship make it on there?
Yes.
Okay, uh, then I think that's all I had.
And then I'll take a. A stab at the list of. Um, open source. Uh, the list of global conferences for us. Alright. Well, thank you, everyone. I'm gonna jump off and enjoy the rest of your day.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Everyone.